Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, July 1st, 2025. I am Chair of the Board, Rick Vess. To my left is Vice Chair Krista Yocum, and to her left Commissioner Matt Shulte. To my right are Commissioners Sean Flowerday and Chelsea Johnson. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin the meeting.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Reading options are available upon request. Brings us to Item 1, minutes. Approval of the minutes, the Board of Commissioners meeting held on June 24th, 2025.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes. Any discussion, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Vess?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 2, Claims. 2A, approval of the claims processed through June 27th, 2025. And I'll note there is an amendment for the payroll.
I move approval of the claims processed through June 27th, including the payroll dispersments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims processed through June 27th, 2025, and payroll dispersments. Please call the roll.
Shulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vess?
Yes.
Motion carries. 2B, approval of a claim to El Centro de las Americas in the amount of $21,835.64.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve Item 2B. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
I will abstain as I serve on their board.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vess?
Yes.
Motion carries. 2C, approval of a claim to Youth for Christ in the amount of $654.90.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve Item 2C. Please call the roll.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shulte?
Abstain as I work there.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vess?
Yes.
Motion carries. 2D, approval of a claim to the Mediation Center in the amount of $10,822.50.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Vess? Vess?
Abstain, sorry. Abstain.
Thank you. Motion carries. That brings, oh, Item 2E, approval of the claims for, including billions for goods and services beyond the 90-day time period provided Nebraska revised Statute 23-135 for Felsberg, Holt, and Olvig dated June 30th, 2025, for a total of $21,132.90.
I move approval. Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Shulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vess?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item 3, consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items will be approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of: A. Amendments to the following county contracts: C-22-0495 with Mahoney Fire Sprinkler Incorporated for the service, inspection, testing, and maintenance of the fire sprinkler system; C-25-0186 with Blue Valley Public Safety Incorporated for storm warning sirens; C-24-0571 with Substrata for the annual supply of soil stabilization enzyme permazine; C-23-0625 with Diamond Vogel Incorporated doing business as Diamond Vogel for paint and related products; C-23-0417 with Yuri Refuge Service Incorporated to provide waste and recycling collection services for the city, county, and PBC locations; C-18-0157 with Well Path LLC for medical care services at the county jail; B. Amendments to the following county contracts for the annual service of weed abatement mowing for county weed authority. They are C-23-0499 with Hauser Incorporated doing business as Lee's Lawn Maintenance; C-23-0498 with Gary's Lawn and Landscape; C-23-0497 with Beatrice Lawn Care Incorporated; C. Rightaway contracts with the following: Guel Land Development Corporation, South 54th Street and Stagecoach Road, in the amount of $1,351; Lower Platte South Natural Resource District, Olive Creek Road and Highway 77, in the amount of $421; Jeffrey and Tricia Cubic, South 54th Street and Stagecoach Road, in the amount of $4,543; Dell and Lori Morimer Revocable Trust, Saltillo Road Improvement, in the total amount of $60,000; Brooks and Nancy Ballard, Saltillo Road Improvement, in the total amount of $57,347; Brett Adley and Geraldine Canover, Van Doren Street and 138th Street, in the total amount of $1,485; Finally, D. A. Utility Permit 2643 with Segro for the installation of New Verizon Underground Utilities located along the east side of Northwest 98th Street.
I move approval of the consent items. Second.
Motion second to approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vess?
Yes.
Motion carries. That brings us to Item 4, a public hearing. It's a public hearing regarding text amendment 25007, amending Lancaster County Subdivision Regulation, Chapter 3, Section 3.12, and amending Lancaster County Zoning Regulations, Articles 2 and 15.
So, we will now open the public hearing. And just to explain the process to everybody present, because I know a number of you have reached out to me, that you haven't been to a public hearing before. This is a piece of change in policy. There's actually three parts to it that have been proposed by the Planning Department. And before we can take any action like that, the Board is obligated to post and then hold a public hearing. We will hear from the staff this morning what the proposed changes are and the reasoning for it. And then the Board of Commissioners are going to have a chance to respond to the information that the staff has shared. Following that, then anyone from the public who wishes to come up and speak can come up and speak. You'll need to be, you'll need to sign in and be sworn in by Mr. Hanson. You'll have three minutes to express any views you have on this particular issue. I would just encourage you to listen carefully to what's being said by the Commissioners and by the staff, and then go accordingly to that. So with that being said, if our friends from the Planning Department would like to come forward?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give us the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. George Wesselhoff, Planning Department. So as mentioned, this text amendment has three parts or components. The first pertains to the subdivision regulations of Lancaster County. The second two pertain to the zoning regulations. The first amendment that is proposed for the subdivision regulations is to allow the Planning Director to grant a six-month time extension for a final plat as far as the expiration timeframe. There's a one-year timeframe for expiration from when the application is received. And more and more, we've seen some plats expire, in several cases due to lien holders, banks that are taking longer and longer to sign a signatory if there's a lien. So this would allow an additional six-month timeframe for that, so the final plat wouldn't expire. The second text amendment under the zoning regulations is to add a definition for average lot width. There are regulations currently in the county zoning regulations for average lot width. There's minimum average lot width requirements, but there's not actually a definition. The city regulations have both. They have the regulations plus a definition. So this is simply to add a definition for average lot width. And the intent of that is to, the intent of the average lot width is to avoid unusually, you know, shaped lots so that there's general consistency with the lot frontage at the county road. Finally, the third text amendment, and I will just, before I briefly summarize, just note or recognize that at the Board's work session last Thursday, there were concerns about this component. And so the Board, if you so chose, could remove this specific text amendment and only approve the first two if that's your decision. But the intent of this third amendment pertains to the home occupations. And I might just mention that unlike the city, the county regulations has two types of home occupations. There's home occupations or regular home occupations. There's also an expanded home occupation, which is more generous in terms of square footage and other allowances, but that does take a special permit. So today's text amendment only pertains to the regular home occupations, Article 15 of the county zoning regulations. And the intent was to define or exclude uses that are not customary, including welding, vehicle body repair, mechanical repair, or rebuilding or dismantling of vehicles, or animal slaughter. Now, this text is identical to the city's text, other than the animal slaughter part, which applies to the Lincoln Three Mile where there's agricultural properties. And it's been in place in the city text since 1979, since the 1979 zoning ordinance. So with that, I can answer any questions, and David could speak.
Yeah, David Carey, Director of the Planning Department. I'll also add to what George was saying, kind of, to kind of come back around to the big picture. So the final plat proposal for the six-month extension is meant to be a customer service, additional provision of service, so that there's more flexibility in making sure that we try to get as many of those done without having to start the process over again. So we feel very good about that. And the average lot width, as George was saying, really just brings clarity to the regulations, so that there, there have been discussions where there's some, you know, not uncertainty about how to handle some of those types of situations with those odd-shaped lots out in the county. So speaking to the home occupation item that is before you as part of this proposal, I will just let you know that after last Thursday's briefing in front of you, as well as obviously, there has been some concern from stakeholders and constituents since then. And so there is a, my suggestion is that perhaps that this is not ready for action, and that would be okay on our part, certainly. There was no male intent here. I think the idea here was that there was to be, bring some clarity to what would be allowed or not allowed. I think that there needs to be more, if we're going to do any of these types of changes, there needs to be some more conversation and discussion about it before we're ready for that. So we are proposing effectively that you not take action on that and/or vote it down at this time, so that there is clarity on what we are doing, what we're not doing. And so that is fine. And I think that that hearing from the, the public on that certainly registered with us, so we're okay with that.
Okay. So what I'm hearing, Mr. Carey, is that proceed with the first two items that George has discussed, the third item, the home business. The Planning Department would like to withdraw that portion.
I think there's a few ways to do that. I mean, we, we could withdraw it, although I think because it's before you, it might be more efficient to, when you decide to take action, maybe to just vote it down at this point.
Vote it down, okay.
Which-
I think the people who showed up deserved to see us vote it down.
Well, Commissioner, I'll get right to that, yeah. So just wanted to clarify one more thing. What you talked about how this statute, this regulation is in place in the city of Lincoln since 1979, apparently, and does extend the three-mile radius around Lincoln. And so the Planning Department brought this forward just in a sense that maybe the uniformity would be beneficial.
Yes, that, that's exactly right. And I think the, the error in that thought process is that obviously there are differences in the county versus the city. So I think that that's the, the further consideration needs to be on that front.
Yeah. And I just want to clarify one more thing, and then I'm going to turn it over. I'm going to recognize the different Commissioners and let them speak on it. But no member of the Board of Commissioners requested this language be brought forward. Is that accurate?
Correct. This is basically an attempt for us to kind of be proactive. And in this case, it wasn't, wasn't helpful to be proactive in that sense.
Very good. I appreciate that. Thank you, David. Commissioner Flower, I'm going to, I promised to let all the Commissioners speak before we go to the public, and so everyone can have their say.
I think I've been the hottest under the collar about this one, so I-
Commissioner, the Chair recognizes Commissioner Flowerday.
Thanks. I, I just wanted to talk to the public a little bit about the process here and sort of how we got to this moment. It's not uncommon, so there, there are three Planning Department proposals in front of us right now. It's not uncommon that the planning staff bring proposals forward. They tend to be kind of clerical cleanup. The first two here that, that were just proposed today, I, I strongly am suspecting that no one here is interested in testifying on those two, and that they're, they're very, one is a six-months extension on a, on, on an application. Another one is a definition in lot width change. It's pretty standard stuff. And it's not inappropriate that planning staff brings those forward from time to time, just as they go through and clean up the regs. I do think this process has made it clear, though, that we need to look at how, at how we handle Planning Department recommendations and the conversations we have about them, so that we don't run a fire drill on the whole community like this, because no one on this board was aware of the home occupation, I don't think, unless I'm very mistaken. No one on this board was aware of the home occupation, suggested changes until our meeting last Thursday, when we were already off to this process then. No one on this board, again, unless I'm very much mistaken, supports that change. And in fact, I might be interested in telling the, if the, the Planning Department, that if we want to see uniformity, how about the city look at their recommend, at their regulations that have been sitting on the books since 1979? Maybe we, I, I am a huge advocate, love it or hate it, I am a huge advocate for landowner rights. I believe people deserve to make money with their property. I am a huge, huge believer in this. Sometimes people don't like that, some people, sometimes people love it. But I would argue that your, your property is yours to run your businesses on, and we should get out of the way of that as often and as frequently as possible. So I, I absolutely don't think we should, we should withdraw it. I think we should vote this thing down. I just wanted everyone to understand kind of how we got here. And I do think we need to just take a look at, when we're looking at more substantive Planning Department recommendations. It's not inappropriate that planning brings forward these recommendations. I think we need that. But I think we maybe need another step in the process, so we don't, frankly, terrify a bunch of people about their livelihood. So.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Who wants to be second? Volunteers? Commissioner Johnson?
Sure. I'll go second. Just first, thank you all for being here. Thank you for the comments that you sent to us. Just really want to express appreciation for the time that you spent. I think we all feel bad for the fire drill, as Sean described it, because as he indicated during our meeting last week, all five of us indicated that we were not supportive of this change. So just thank you for engaging in the process, and we'll work to improve the process, so that you don't have to deal with this again.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Yocum?
I don't have a lot to add. I mean, it is true that none of us really had an appetite to take this up or to, to vote for this. I did speak with, maybe some of you are here today. I did speak with quite a few folks over the last couple of days, who are all very respectful and really interested in protecting their own business and their own rights, which I certainly respect. There was a lot of vitriol online, in social media, which seemed excessive, because I think all the conversations that we had were extremely reasonable. This is not appropriate for the county at this time. Should the county become dense enough that it does make a difference, my guess is not a one of us will be left on this body, because I think it's going to take quite a few years. But my request would be that any business, existing business be grandfathered in, should this ever have to come, come to be.
Okay, very good. Commissioner Shulte?
Yeah, sure. Good morning, everybody. Thanks for coming out. I have a feeling some of you guys are here because Farm Bureau reached out to you. Actually, after last Thursday's meeting, I reached out to Farm Bureau and just said, hey, help me understand. Am I reading this wrong? Is this bad for farmers and acreage owners? And they, they obviously notified a lot of you, and I'm glad that you're here, because I stand with you. I've told many of you guys who've reached out to me, I'm 100%, 100% opposed to this. I actually think the vitriol on social media is probably as appropriate. We should not, as a government, be shutting down businesses like this. I also think if, if we really are for it, we actually need to look at these policies a little bit more closely and release some more additional regulations that are on this. For example, Part F says, "No more than 20% of the total floor area of all buildings on the premises is utilized in conducting such a home occupation." That would mean that if somebody has an acreage with a 2,000-square-foot house, they could not use their garage, which might be about 400 square foot, to do this sort of business. That seems to me like that is incredibly limiting. I, I'm embarrassed that this came up. I think it shows that the Planning Department was being a little tone deaf to the differences between the city and the county. And I, I don't think we need to talk about it anymore. I heard you say we should talk about it more. I don't think we need to talk about it more. I think the message is very clear. We don't want this in the county.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll make my remarks, and then we'll let staff go on. First of all, I just want to say a couple things. There are no bad guys in this. There are people who, in a good faith effort to do what they perceive as their jobs, made a proposal. And there's disagreement as to the merits of that proposal. I don't think vitriol or painting people as evil, criminal types is helpful in a society like ours. These things are best handled through the kind of discussions I got to have with so many of you. That's how good decisions get made, not on stupid Facebook posts where you're hiding in your basement. Letting people know what's going on, always appropriate. We're glad you're all here. You're always welcome to come. But I want to say thank you to the Planning Department. You folks do a lot of good work that help our county, and I appreciate that. And if you gentlemen want to step down, I'll conclude my remarks. If we need you, we'll call you back.
Thank you.
When this came out on Thursday, all of us were surprised and caught a little bit off guard. But I think the big thing was, the discussion that it created has been positive for our community. My own frame of reference, and I told everybody I talked to, I think, you have to understand, I grew up with a guy who had two welders, a cutting torch, and every other tool I've ever seen in my life in his garage. Farmers from all over Cass County stopped by Floyd Vess's house when they needed repairs, and they got their equipment back repaired and in the field, and they could go do what they needed to do. So my frame of reference is very positive on these type of entities. Lancaster County needs all the small businesses we have to make a successful county. And we value your contribution to our community, and we want to support those efforts of all the responsible business owners in our community. And we don't want to paint you with a brush where one bad actor creates a really bad scenario for their neighbors. That's, that's the worst-case scenario. We don't want to paint everybody with that brush, and that's what we're going to avoid doing today. So I appreciate everyone who reached out. I appreciate everyone I talked to. Everyone I talked to, and I talked to seven or eight of you, and a whole bunch out in the hallway. Every conversation I had was thoughtful, was well put together, and added to the conversation that it takes to have a successful community. So thank you to everyone who's participated in this process. So at this point now, you've heard the intent, and I think I'm going to poll the Commissioners. We can't vote during public hearings, but I'm going to poll the Commissioners. If we put this on next Tuesday's agenda, will you vote against the third portion regarding home businesses? Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Johnson?
I'll vote against it.
Commissioner Flowerday?
Dead against it.
Commissioner Yocum?
My intent is to vote against it.
Absolutely.
I also will vote against this proposed language. I think maybe we put it on the agenda, we vote the first two in, we'll vote the third one down.
Should we just explain how the text amendment votes work? The text amendment hearings are always done one week before the votes. That's just been our pretty standard process. So we have the public hearing, and then the next week we have the vote. Currently on the agenda, there is not an action item for a vote on this, because we always do, that would have been scheduled for, for next week.
Yep.
Anyone who wants to speak at this public hearing, too?
Well, we'll, 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 thank you. We sometimes share the chairship here. We're very, we're very friendly.
I'm just hot about this one. This one just made me.
Yeah, no, I appreciate your passion on this. But, yeah, so there won't be a vote today, but you have heard all five Commissioners say that it will be on next Tuesday's agenda, and all five of us have said to you all on TV, we will vote against that portion. So this is a public hearing. Any members of the public who'd like to come up and talk about any of these three items are welcome to do so at this time. You'll be sworn in. You'll have three minutes. Tom, well, Mr. Ringsmith, if you'd like to come up, please do. Bring your dad if you want.
No, leave him there.
Please raise your hand.
Oh, I just, anyone.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give us the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you state your name and sign in?
Thomas Ringsmith. Do I have to start?
Yeah.
All right. Good morning, and thank you. I didn't know how this was going to go today. It was really nice to talk to you, Rick, out there in the hallway, and get a lot more understanding on how this all happened, and your explanation of how we got here. So I just wanted to stand up. I, I see a lot of blue collar out there, so I didn't know if anyone was going to stand up. But I, I wanted to preemptively stand up and say thank you on behalf of the welders, the machinists, the guys working on cars. So thank you for your commitment on camera, in front of everybody, to kill this. So thank you for your commitment on camera, in front of everybody, to kill this, and to, as Sean was saying, protect our ability to make some money doing what we love out of our homes, out of our garages, our backyards. Yeah, that's really, that's about it. It's, it's really great to see what a turnout we had here from all the, the workers, the laborers. I did not see any of the vitriol on Facebook, and I'm glad that I didn't see it. The internet is, yeah. So, I'm not going to use all three minutes, that would be too much. So thank you for your promise to vote this down and to protect our ability to do what we love out of our garages and homes.
Thank you, Mr. Ringsmith. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Yeah, come on up, sir. They need to be sworn in.
Are we sworn in? Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you state your name and sign in?
Nicholas Baldwin. Hello, my name is Nicholas Baldwin. I've had the opportunity to apprentice with my, with my dad in our driveway since I was 13. My dad is a professional auto technician, and his side job works on people's cars in our driveway. There I've learned valuable skills such as how to change the oil, the spark plugs, the brakes, and many other repairs. I've also had the chance to help out with various major repairs as well, involving disassembling engines to replace critical components. Not only has the freedom to do so given me experience, but has also blessed many people that couldn't afford to go to a shop and pay unreasonable amounts for their automotive needs. Passing this new law will destroy the independence of homeowners and future generations of Nebraskans.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time.
Well said.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak at this time?
My name is Harry Mewbot.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
First of all, I want to thank you guys for catching this fire sale. I just happened to find out about it on Saturday. And I don't appreciate fire sales from the planning. Over the years, I've been involved with this county for 57 years. And occasionally, the planning will throw something through that people don't even know about, and I really appreciate you catching this. Some of the things that they put in here, one thing, they're talking about the definition on, on these lot sizes, but it doesn't mention any actual sizes in their planning. They just say you want to change the definition. And one of the most important things about a lot size is the actual lot size of the minimum lot. It's not even on there that I could find. Now, back to these other, back to the items about welding and all this home use. When I was in the third grade in like 1955, we had class on communism. And communism is, this is almost like communism where we tell people, "Spy on your neighbors and see what's going on." And this is not only going on in planning, it's also going on in another department here in Lincoln. I'm not going to mention it right now, I could talk to you later about it, that they're overreaching, they're talking about going into houses and checking if they got whirlpools and bat, large bathtubs that are not being reported. And it's gotten, it's out of control, and it's coming down under, under the wires. And we don't, people don't even know about it. This, this just needs to be stopped. This is kind of a waste of time, and planning needs to do a better. We need to start taking some of the regulations away that... There's acreages out there, when they went to the outlots, planning took away the access to the outlots for the farmers. And they said that if there was a driveway to the fields that the farm, the outlots, planning actually took away the access, and they've even, and say, "Well, you can use your neighbor's property to drive onto the outlot." And that kind of stuff shouldn't be happening.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am, come forward.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and sign in.
My name is Kristin Draper. Thank you. I went to the effort to type it out, so I thought I might as well come up and say it, so. My name is Kristin Draper. I reside at 601 May Street in First, Nebraska. I'm a 23-year resident of Lancaster County. I'm here today to speak in opposition of excluding certain uses from home occupations, which is a proposed amendment to the zoning regulations proposed by our Planning Department. Section 1.5 of the Comprehensive Plan's introduction states, "Lincoln and Lancaster County are one community while containing a rich mosaic of households living in a variety of urban and rural settings." While I agree with the one-community concept, I want to remind my commissioners, as you've stated, one community doesn't mean one need. The needs of rural Lancaster County can and do differ from the needs of the urban city of Lincoln. Zoning should be applied in conformance with the Comprehensive Plan, should also represent a balance between private property rights and the value of public investments. Part of that balance is determined by using two distinct yet compatible concepts, highest and best use. Highest is an economic term determined by market forces, and best is a value decided by government as an expression of the public's system of values. This comes directly from Chapter 7 of the Nebraska Planning Handbook. It's my opinion that the proposed amendment to the zoning regulations is not in conformance with the Comprehensive Plan. The fourth goal cited in the Comprehensive Plan is economic opportunity. This very goal states, "In addition to cultivating a talented workforce, it is important to have an economic environment that supports business creation, innovation, and expansion." The very first contributing element to this goal is, quote, "Skilled and educated workforce, including tradespeople." Welders, mechanics, and butchers, or those who slaughter animals and process their meat, are skilled trades. All three trades requiring training, equipment, and facilities necessary to perform these trades. Creation, innovation, expansion is the family farmer who supplements their income by starting a small welding business on their farm. It's the small acreage owner, owner who finds a new way to build, to bring their dream of from farm to table to life. It's the hunting enthusiast who's tired of taking their deer to another county for processing and decides to open a butcher shop in their outbuilding or garage. A quick 30-second map search on my phone shows no available deer processing business in Lancaster County, none. That means every one of your Lancaster County residents, including me, must take their game to be processed outside Lancaster County. We're going to Gage, Saline, Saunders, Otto County, everywhere but here. The Planning Commission's premise for this amendment is that these very types of trades are not customary home occupations. Again, this may be the case for the city of Lincoln and their residential and commercial zoning districts, but not in rural. It's simply not the case. And after, and after my 30-second map search, I would argue that there is a desperate need for those change, those trades, specifically animal slaughtering and processing. It would certainly make my life easier during rifle season. The def, the definition of create is to bring something into existence. Innovate is defined as to changes in something established, especially by introducing new methods, ideas, or product, products. Commissioners, these very words, creation and innovation, aren't customary. You have a comprehensive plan that acknowledges out-of-the-box thinking as a necessity for economic opportunity. Customary is purchasing a piece of commercial property and opening a business. But, but creative and innovative is finding a way to make your dream business come true or supplement your income when you don't have the financial resources to open and operate a brick-and-mortar business in a customary fashion. The Planning Department goes on to state that this amendment is similar to the city of Lincoln zoning or home occupations. I'll remind you again, the needs of rural Lancaster County can and do differ from the needs of the urban city of Lincoln. This is exactly where our needs differ, from those who live in Lincoln. There is a larger need for welders, mechanics, and animal processors in the county, and with a significantly reduced availability of commercial property, the likelihood and necessity of in-home businesses to provide these goods and services to rural Lancaster County residents is much higher, not to mention the added bonus of supporting and promoting economic growth in rural Lancaster County.
Draper?
Finally, I'm concerned with the trickle-down effect that this proposed amendment will have on the cities and villages in Lancaster County. Is this change going to compel, persuade, or pressure the smaller communities to fall in line with the city and county? Small towns and villages must rely on creative and innovative ways to keep their businesses open and bring new businesses to their town.
Ms. Draper?
Yes. Am I out of time?
Your time's up.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you, ma'am. Any other members of the public wishing to speak? We've got one here, and then a gentleman in the back.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, so help me God. My name is Tim Norris. I was on the Bennett Fire Department for 21 years. I was the fire chief. I also own Home and Farm Insurance, Small Business in Bennett. So I got contacted by several of my clients that said, "What in the world is going on with the county?" And I said, "I don't know." So I read a bunch of stuff. But all I can say is, as the fire chief and a member of our community, I've never had an incident with any of these businesses. I've had it with other businesses, but none with these. Have you seen the price of an acreage these days? There are people that want to live in your county, but when they look at the price of the acres, they have to say, "How am I going to afford this?" And you know what they do? They supplement it with a part-time job besides their main job. So these are hard-working people. They work 60, 70 hours a week so they can live in your area of the county. And so I think it behooves us to not always get wagged by the city. You know, you're the county. You know, stand up, be the bold ones. And I appreciate all the comments that you have made so far, but I think a lot of times it seems like the city makes the decisions, and it just gets pushed on to us, and it's like, "Oh, well, we'll just follow along." So I'm glad to see you're starting to stand up and say, "No, we're not just going to go along with what's getting pushed toward us." But I can just say that this will affect, if this would happen, some of the people that I personally know. And they'll have to decide, can we stay in this county? If we can't have our small business that supplements to allow us to live here. So I'm glad to hear what you've said, I'm glad you've listened to your constituents, but this is an important thing. And, you know, we just have to really get that information out ahead of time so we have good dialogue with our community, and so we don't end up in a fire situation like we are now. But I can just say that these businesses are essential. All businesses are essential in the county. And we want people to be creative, and I appreciate some of the stuff that you said about, you know, we really want people to have choices in their land use. So as long as it's not hurting other people, let's encourage people to be creative and useful of their land. Thank you very much.
Mr. Norris?
Do you solemnly swear, excuse me, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do, sir. My name's Jeff Radek. I've talked to, had communication with the four of you. It's great, thank you for calling and contacting. I don't have to say what I wanted to say because of your decisions. I do have a question about, they made a comment about being pro, this being proactive. What is being, what is that for? Being proactive towards?
If I may, sir, I think the intent was...
I'd like to see...
Oh, you, well, we can bring him back up. After public testimony is over, if you, we could ask George or David what being proactive means to them. I'm glad to do it. Are you the bank protector?
Yeah, and I install bank equipment, yes, sir.
That's what I thought. Most creative thing I've ever heard in my life. What a great business. So we will ask, what does proactive mean? What was the purpose of being proactive? That's the question.
Yeah, proactive towards, what was, what is their vision?
We will do that.
Yeah, it's an interesting life, I tell you, with that many of us.
Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, come on up, ma'am.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely, yes, I do. My name is Jessica Baldwin. Resident here in Lincoln, wife, well, start with granddaughter of a farmer, daughter of a welder, wife of an auto technician. And this is a subject that I'm incredibly passionate about, because, I mean, growing up on the farm, we supplemented our income as well. And not only that, but we also took our animals to another farm, which wasn't an official butcher, right? In, in the city to be processed where we were able to have their facilities, the use of their facilities, and process it on our own as we needed. My husband and I, we have been working together to build up his, the work that he does for people on the side in our driveway, and we have needed that supplemental income. And just like someone said earlier, sorry, this is just, we just bought a house because it was less expensive than finding a shop, literally the only shop we have been able to find, and which is not your problem, that's the city of Lincoln, I assume, is $2,600 a month. We have five children to raise, we just graduated our first, we have four more to go. $2,600 a month on top of our own personal expenses at home, despite the fact that, other than the house, we're debt-free, that's still a lot every month when you're considering raising all these children. Not only that, but my husband has had the opportunity to mentor and teach classes for our local homeschool community. He has been able to teach other youth and train them on vehicles as well. So, something like this, which I know is not your doing, would definitely squash apprenticeships, it would squash mentorships, and this is incredibly important to growing our next generation. It's not just us, it's the economic growth for generations to come. So I hope that that is something that you will consider as well. But really, every time we have called on a shop that has even been a previous automotive shop in Lincoln, that has closed down, and now the company is renting the building again, we can't get in there because they won't rent to automotive repair anymore. And we have no idea why. Again, I'm sure that's, that is not on your plate, that is the City Council of Lincoln, but there is something going on that we, it's impossible to find a shop. We need places to work while we cannot find a location.
Thank you, Mrs. Baldwin. Any other members of the public wishing to speak on this text amendment? Oh, yes, sir.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name is Frank Lee, and I would like to request a couple of things, things from you guys. I don't really need to add anything to justify why this is obviously a bad idea, because I think plenty of people have very, very clearly laid that out. I think, so I would like to request just a couple of things. I think whoever came up with this idea should be fired. That's my personal opinion. This is completely unacceptable, because this person is obviously unfit for public office, because this is just pure, this is just pure tyranny. I think it's quite telling that the only defense offered is that it's some sort of consistency thing. I mean, that's just ridiculous. It obviously doesn't benefit anyone. There's no possible way anyone can think this is beneficial to anyone, so I just think this person is unfit. Secondly, I think you guys should move the meeting time to when it's more reasonable, when, when more people can show up. This is nine in the morning, most people have to work. Maybe move it to six or seven in the, in the evening. I guarantee you, if this were held later today, like six or seven, this building would just be completely filled with people. just be completely filled with people. So, to, to increase transparency, you guys should consider moving the meeting time to much later in the day because this is outrageous, nine in the morning. And, yeah, that's, I mean, we still have quite a few people here, thank God, but this is ridiculous. So, those are my two requests. So, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Lee.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
Well, I had this whole thing written out, typed out, but I figured I should start by saying, putting a face to myself, Ally Bax, so that I'm not the person who is stupid and in a basement sharing posts. I know there was a lot of vitriol, as you called it, in people's posts. I don't believe mine was. I believe that I did, quite possibly, there might be, my post may have been the reason that there are people in this room because per usual fashion, it is snuck in at the last second, right around a holiday, just under the radar, gets voted in. I think it's absolutely ridiculous. So, I'm going to skip over my parts of the letter that are talking about this, all of this, that you're saying you're going to vote down, which I do believe is absolutely important. I don't think in any capacity this should ever be voted through. It's absolutely ridiculous, like Frank said. But, going back to what Frank said, it's, it's unacceptable. It's unacceptable that these meetings are held during the day. LPS board meetings, things like that, they're held at night. People have jobs. Look at, we keep going back to the economy. People can't take time off work. People can't on a moment's notice request PTO for four days later. Like, that, that, that can't happen. And then it gives the illusion that no one was opposed. Nobody came out. We're here. And so, forgive me for, for making a post, for making it known, but maybe that's what has to happen for, to get the word out so that people know what's going on. I don't, I, I don't think I'm unreasonable and I'm not saying that this is something that you guys need to do or change moving forward to like put out, you know, a more popular, I don't know, print it in the front page of the news. Obviously, that's unrealistic. But, these things that just keep flying under the radar, it, it's just, it's not okay. It's not okay that these things keep vote, getting voted on. I live out near Hallam. I'm part of the 2,400 acre solar project. Like, all of these things keep coming and they just keep coming. Like, where, at what point are we just done with the overreach and the just continual press for this? It's just, it's just getting out of control. And so, it just, the timing of it, I mean, it just, it to give the illusion, like I said, that, that we're, that nobody's coming out, that nobody's in opposition, that, I mean, that's literally silencing people through scheduling. It's a scheduling error that people can't come out. That doesn't mean that we're, that there's no opposition. There's plenty of opposition and I think you've seen that through all the, of us in the Hallam area. And while I'm at it, um, you know, speaking of, I believe that all of this was due to an ulterior motive. I won't, you know, I can say I believe. I don't know. But, speaking of motives, let's talk about integrity because while rural families are being scrutinized for repairing tractors in the garages or processing animals on their land, the same level of scrutiny is not being applied to matters like the Panama Energy Center, a massive industrial project that will fundamentally alter our community, our environment, and our future. And the real kicker, some of the very people sitting before me who vote on these issues have ties, direct or indirect, to the corporations pushing these projects forward.
Ma'am, ma'am, that is your three minutes. Thank you. Appreciate your time. Anyone else?
And commissioners, just before we continue, any reference to ongoing legations that involve the county, I would recommend on legal counsel's advice to not respond to them.
All right. Thank you, Andrew.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
What?
My name is Sandy Hermish and I also live over by Hallam. And first of all, I want to thank you for your comments about voting this issue down. But, on the contrary, I just want you to understand how some of these things affect us in the rural community. I mean, this is a big deal. There's people out there, families, that are fighting for their lives to have money to live. And this, this would have taken away their ability, their dream of having a farm and having income for their family. This isn't right. This isn't right. Someone here has to stand up for us in the rural community. It feels like all these things happen and we're notified at the last minute, we have to come in and fight for our lives. And this is, I mean, to you guys, this is maybe a little thing and you're all sitting here, "Well, we never intended this. We never intended this." But, what if we wouldn't have found out about it? What if people wouldn't have come forward? Could it this been passed through? We don't know. We don't know. But, what I'm saying is, somebody has to fight for us. I was sitting when a gentleman found out about this, this resolution. And I seen the look on his face. He was crushed. This is not something that we can just take lightly. You guys have to do a better job. This planning board has to do a better job for us in this community. Please. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Yeah, I see one here and then someone over here. We'll go with this gentleman and then that lady over there.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. My name's Tyler Stellic from southwest corner of Lancaster County. Live two miles from Saline County, four miles from Gage County. First off, I'd like to thank you guys for standing up for the county and doing what's right for all of us. Decisions like this will keep people in Lancaster County. I, I've heard more, I, I was born and raised there. I've heard more conversations from neighbors over the last three years that they're looking for property in Gage County, looking for property in Saline County. And we want to keep those neighbors. We want to keep those acreages filled. We don't want the vacancies. Obviously, people are wanting to move into Nebraska and into our communities, so that's great. Just like to thank you guys for shutting us down and having the county at your best interest.
Thank you, sir.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I want to start by...
Name, ma'am.
My name's Kami Slosson and I, uh, live out in the Martell-Hallam area. Um, I do want to thank you guys for coming on the record to say that you'll be voting down the home occupation piece. I also had a piece to speak on, but I appreciate you guys saying that because that it very clearly affects a lot of people. Um, I do, however, want to take the time to ask about the other pieces of the text amendment. And I'm not going to speak on anything I wrote up because I really do want to talk to you guys and understand why you keep seeing some of the same faces here. And I don't really maybe even think it's some of you guys. Maybe this really is a planning commission issue. But, we do have this solar project going on in our area. We have been completely blindsided by things that are voting certain pieces of a puzzle in to allow things to happen. So, as far as the extensions, there are concerns. You know, there's a piece on that that talks about government approval. I mean, is that waiting for a certain funding? Is that administration support? What does that look like? Who votes for it? Is it everybody? I mean, who, who decides on where that extension, um, is granted to? Um, another one with the lot width. We have people perusing our areas right now from private companies trying to gain easements. We have surveyors who are unwelcome on people's property. I mean, the law might say that they're welcome, but it's unsettling to individuals in our community. They're on corner lots of their property. As soon as a property owner comes out to talk to them, they run off. You can't get a name. You don't know who they are. It's easy to put something on and pretend you're somebody, too. Um, we've had issues. We've had safety issues out in our rural areas. So, everyone takes these things. It's scary. I mean, it's not just what's fair, it's scary. So, as far as the defining of the lot widths and things like that, we would, I would like some clarification and I think probably other people would, too. Who is this benefiting? Is it benefiting these companies that are trying to come out there? Would the change in these widths change these easements? So, I think moving forward, those pieces, they shouldn't just be voted on next week. There should be some clarification and making sure that we, as a public, kind of understand what's going on, too.
Okay. We can, we can ask those questions, Tammy. You know, I've already promised to ask what proactive means and we can follow up with the extension.
Yeah. And, and really, we don't, we don't want to be here either. We are as sick, probably, as you guys are of seeing our faces. We don't want to be here. But, the, it, it has created this. The lack of transparency or the things being voted in last minute and kind of like my sister Ally said, a Facebook post was never intended to create a firestorm. What it is, is when these things haven't been passed on, they've been voted through. So, it was to gain the attention of the people that this could very well affect.
Certainly valid. And if you wanted to stay after the meeting, I'd be glad to have that conversation about what I meant by my remarks. But, no, it's valid to let people know, so...
I would be glad to have further conversation, too. Well, I appreciate your time. Thank you. I was the first one that said the truth.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Yeah, yeah, Mr. Ringsma.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I'm not going to give testimony. I just have a question.
Well, you still need to.
I have a question. What is the name of the person who came up with this idea to expand the city thing into the county? Thank you.
All right. Very good, sir. Thank you, John. Nobody's getting fired, I don't believe. But, anyway, um, any, anyone else, uh, wishing to come forward and ask questions or make comments? Sir, yes. I have at least two here. You'll be next then, sir.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I won't read my whole long thing that I wrote out, though.
Your surname.
Oh, I was going, getting there. My name's Andrew Lewis. I own Lewis Welding and Repair, South Lancaster County. And, uh, like I said, I won't read my whole thing my lovely wife wrote out for me, pretty much. But, uh, um, I appreciate the transparency and everything for talking about and everything and kind of feeling like you're sticking up for the rural community a little bit. I sure appreciate that because like it sure feels like we're pretty alone out there. So, um, my only thing would be is, uh, you know, like the gentleman asked about the proactive thing, you know, working forward, what, what's their plan going forward or whatever would be, you know, want to make sure we don't get blindsided again, you know, with another amendment or something down the road. I just, that'd be my only thing of, you know, we're, none of these people here are trying to bother anybody else. We're just trying to make a living. Like, you know, some of us are working day jobs, like you said, and working nights. I did that for years until we bought our property out there. I mean, we bought, I bought more land than I ever thought I would ever own just because I wanted to do this and I paid more, we paid more for that than I ever thought I would ever have in my life. Because I just, the goal was always to have a business out there and everything and just be home with the family more. Because it's just, this blue collar jobs are not for the weak, man. They're a lot of hours. It's a lot of time, a lot of time away from family and it's just not, a lot of times it's kind of not great. So, trying to just, you know, run the business at home gives you a little more home time. Might be the same amount of time, but you get to pick and choose kind of when you do it, you know? Might be Sunday at two in the morning, doing quiet stuff outside that you're not bothering anybody. But, you know, you're wiring up a, wiring up a piece of equipment, doing real quiet stuff in the dark, you know? So, I mean, it's just, it's like I said, it's tough. So, I appreciate the transparency for sure, but would like to know about, you know, I guess, what their plan is going forward to make sure we're not, you know, make sure, make sure we're not, uh, in the line of fire again. So, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Uh, I think this gentleman back here.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You'll need to sign in, sir, and then give us your name, if you could sign in.
Uh, my name is Leon Cruzmark. I am a resident of rural Lancaster County and, uh, I just wanted to make a few comments here, one being that in this national era of deregulation for big business and corporations, I don't think that we should stymie local entrepreneurs. Many businesses have been started at home in garages. Dell Computers started in the garage. They're a big national community. And I don't, and I, I do not like the aspect of stymieing some of this, these sort of things on a local level. And I think, uh, that, uh, people should, uh, and this, a lot of businesses come out of small, small homes and garages and stuff. And, uh, that's just how I feel about it. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing, sir. Any other members of the public wishing to testimon, testify at this time? Anyone else? Seeing none, Mr. Carey, if you'd come back up. We have a few questions. I think you heard them, but we'll go through them and...
Commissioners, before he starts, I do have a few letters of opposition to read into the record. Uh, they are from Kimberly Robinson, Jeff Radek, Dave Bryant, Bob Workman, and Dwight and Yvonne DeKulst.
Thank you. David, I mean, you have an enormous responsibility. Being the head of the planning department involves a broad reach of areas and responsibilities. And we're here on a particular issue today, but we were, we were asked, in the planning department's view, what does proactive mean? How do you view that?
Yeah, and I, that's the term that I used. So, uh, the context here is that we are a city and county planning department, so we work for both the city of Lincoln as well as the rural areas of the county. And so, we actually have, um, two sets of regulations. So, we have a, a city zoning code and subdivision ordinance and then we have county regulations as well. And they are different. Um, they're set up differently and they are meant to, to address as best as possible those different jurisdictions. My use of the term proactive is the, is, is a way of explaining how, when we do our work in the planning sense, is we're thinking about things that, quite frankly, didn't come across in this sense, obviously, today and with this proposal. But, in our sense, trying to, to see where there might be conflict points that we can try to be preemptive and try to avoid those things. Their planning is, there's always a balancing act. There's obviously, there's a very strong, um, need to make sure that property rights are preserved, but at the same time, every once in a while, there are conflict points when there are some things that happen that become really, in our, in our world, what we call nuisances to neighbors and things like that. So, we try to look at those things and try to be proactive and thinking through what might we try to avoid moving forward, um, in that sense. In this case, I will tell you right now that there were, there was a lack of kicking in the tires on this. There was a, uh, I believe, Matt, you used the term tone deaf, and I think that's a very appropriate way to put this. So, I accept that, that there was a lack of understanding of what this type of change would mean out in the rural areas of the county. And I will, and I said it before, but I'll say it again, really, the, the, the tone deafness of it was that we were, we came from it too far from the existing city rule on this and not being as open to or thinking through better on the rural areas as well. So, um, very much a, a learning point for me today and for this process. And I will also point out, um, there was also part of that comment of the request to talk about what proactive meant. I will, I will give credit to the, to the commissioners sitting here today that you picked up on this immediately last Thursday. You were not going to pass this. This was, this hearing didn't have to happen for you to make that decision. So, I, I give you that credit. So, that I, in, in a way, I apologize for the, the fact that this got to the point where it got without further vetting.
But, I, I deeply appreciate the responsibility you're showing here this morning. It's very consistent with the leadership. It's very consistent with the leadership you provide on an ongoing basis. Lincoln and Lancaster County is very fortunate to have you working for the citizens. So thank you for all of that. Because we all know, everybody wants property rights until their neighbor does something they don't want. And then they want the planning department to fix what their neighbor, so we've seen that. And I understand your concerns there. But we're all in agreement that this time, this statute is not needed. We had a question about the extension. Can you add a little bit of depth on the, how that's going to impact the width measurements?
I actually have George Westhoff come up. He's going to be more expert on explaining how that works.
It was the six-month extension on plat approvals and then the lot width definition change.
Yeah, and I, and I can speak to the six-month. So what we've seen is that there have been, when there are easements involved in trying to get a final plat for a property done, often more recently especially, that those processes to get final approvals have taken a long time. No real blame to be, you know, placed on that. It's just that it becomes complicated at times. We don't want to have property owners that have to start over again. And that, that's a waste of time and money for the property owner as well as for staff. So this is just a way to try to make sure that we extend that out when those situations arise.
And that'll be at the, that'll be at the discretion of the planning department.
Correct.
So I appreciate the extension because I do think people want to get done. There have been times when the planning department has been part of the slow process though. Maybe not the ultimate, but making decisions quickly. I know you guys have to communicate with other departments, engineering and different things like that. I'd maybe encourage you guys to just take a look internally as well and say, hey, what can we do to speed up this process? Because even waiting 18 months, even a year is a long time for a landowner, for someone who's looking to subdivide their property to allow multiple houses on or something like that.
Yeah, we, we absolutely don't want to be the reason, so.
And, but I do appreciate creating the opportunity for them to not have to reapply, which is what I understand you're trying to do. And I also understand that some of those things are outside of your control. You mentioned specifically liens being released and things like that, so.
Very good. George, tell us, help us understand better what lot width this is all about.
Sure. So there's a, if we take an agricultural property, property that's owned agricultural, there's a minimum frontage requirement, adjacency along the county road of 550 feet. In addition to that, there's an average lot width of 550 feet. And then again, there's no, currently not a definition. How you calculate the average lot width, at least the practice has been to follow the city's definition, is to take the lot area and divide it by the distance from the front property line or the right-of-way line to the rear lot line to see if it at least equals the 550 feet. And again, the intent is to avoid an unusual lot. This amendment does not change the minimum standards as far as the 550 average lot width or the 550 frontage requirement.
Okay. Very good.
Can I just follow up a question?
Yeah, absolutely.
So what is the 550-foot lot width requirement for? Like what, they have to meet that in order to what? Build a house, farm it, like what's that mean?
Sure, excellent question. So that is the, the minimum size if your property is owned agricultural to be buildable, to build a house or other structure. So 20 acres is the general minimum requirement. And then 550 feet of average lot width and lot frontage for, for just a general lot. Of course, there's CUPs or farmstead splits, other ways to do lesser requirements. But just generally speaking, that's the standard.
Does it, does, the other question that was kind of asked, part of that was, does this have any impact on easements that could be taken or might be taken or are being taken for different, any sort of utility or?
No, no impact at all on easements.
The other thing, I'll just say, which I said, I told you on Thursday is, I don't like when we create a policy based on a practice. If there's a problem, we should create the policy and then follow that policy. Because what it does is it creates, it can create a sense of favoritism. You did it one way for somebody else and a different way for somebody else. So when we come to these issues, identifying and creating the policy upfront creates equity for everybody. So I'd prefer that we, we do it backwards rather than making a policy to manage our practice. Make a policy and then put that into practice.
Commissioner Yelich.
So my, my question is, this doesn't affect any existing, right? This is only going forward from the time that, that we would vote this into practice.
Right, this doesn't affect anyone negatively. It's really to add clarity of a definition in the county regulations.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I, just a comment, I guess, just, just reiterating, I guess, that I think we have a desire to improve the process here. And, you know, as you know, from the moment that this was presented to the board on Thursday, we all indicated that we would not be supportive of this. But the way that our process works, once something has moved out of planning, it just goes to us. So in an effort to not waste anyone's time in the future, I just wanted to reiterate that we would like to improve that process moving forward.
Very much noted, and I'm already thinking through those things.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other thing else, commissioners?
I guess I would just, one other thing that was mentioned several times is the time of day that these meetings happen. I do think there, there would be something for us to consider there. Possibly we should consider doing an evening meeting once a month when we're doing public hearings. I think that's not something we're acting on today. But I do think that is a discussion that has happened around this board for years, long before I think any of us were even around, and would be very appropriate for us to think about.
Right. Anything else? Gentlemen, thank you all for your time. And we will all be wiser having gone through this and better prepared to make decisions in the future. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to come to the end of the public hearing here. If you have further questions, feel free to reach out to me directly through my email or commish or to the planning department if that's more appropriate for you all. So with that, we will now close the public hearing.
Just, can I just say, it'll be real fast. I've got one, one final comment, just to all of you. Thank you for coming out and, you know, frankly, I mean, it's an old statement, but it, the, the safeguarding of, of our country is through the watchfulness of the citizens. And I'm paraphrasing there, I don't think I got the quote exactly right, but you understand what I'm saying. And that's what you all did today. Good job, seriously, feel good about that. I'm glad you came out to talk to us about this. I am sorry about like what I called the fire drill earlier. I, I can tell you though, the good part about this is that nothing could have safeguarded home occupations, probably more with this board over the next decade or so than this process. So like, I promise, we're not touching it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, those of you who would like to leave, you're free to do so at this time.
Thank you for your service.
Could we take just a little, find a break?
Yeah, I'm dying.
Okay, we will, Mr. Hanson, we're going to take a five-minute break here. We will come back in close to five minutes. Welcome back, everyone. From the break, we, we have concluded the public hearing and we will now continue with new business.
Hey, real quick, I know we've had public hearings. Just remind me what the rules are in public hearings. I'm not supposed to learn more. And I have a feeling we're going to hear from other people in the public. So I think just a reminder maybe from.
Verification. Christie, just so we're all clear, we should not.
I think Andrew's doing it.
Oh, Andrew, okay. Andrew, do you want to answer that question? The question was asked, how do we regard any information received after the public hearing is closed?
Right, so to avoid the ex parte communication stuff. So you can technically receive information regarding this stuff. It's just that once we have the voting stuff next week, you'll have to make an on-record disclosure of, you know, who was it with, you know? And just a general description of, you know, what the discussion was. and just a general description of, you know, what the discussion was. So technically, yes, you can receive information, but my legal advice would be if it has to deal with anything about the tax amendment, I would just say to the person or entity, hey, I would like to not talk about that. So that's how, that's the easiest way to avoid the ex parte communication.
And then if you do have one, you'll have to declare it at the vote next year.
Yeah, on the record.
Yeah, okay. Thanks for clarifying that. Mr. Clerk.
Item five, new business. Item 5A, a resolution in the matter of witness fees paid by Lancaster County that have remained unclaimed for six months or more.
Commissioner.
With approval.
Second.
Motion is second to approve item 5A. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5B, resolution in the matter of authorizing traffic control devices in Lancaster County, Nebraska. Can I just move approval?
We should probably just have a moment, right? Okay, so I'm going to put an exhibit up on the overhead. This is a corridor by Pawnee Lake from West Adams to West Fletcher Avenue. We don't have very many curved roads in Lancaster County. However, this particular road has a lot of curves to it.
Which makes for a nice, pretty drive.
Well, that is true, but when we have curved roads, we also have a tendency to have accidents associated with those curved roads because people, especially in Lancaster County, are anticipating the road to be straight. This was the site of a really unfortunate crash that involved a horse probably about eighteen months ago now. So coming forward with this, what we're recommending is that we place chevrons around the five locations shown in red on the overall exhibit.
Slide it up just a little bit, we can't quite see the bottom.
There we go, sorry about that. The five locations shown in red across the roughly two miles. In addition to that, we're also, we've also studied this and we're recommending that the speed limit be dropped from fifty-five to forty-five and that additional signage be added where you see the yellow signs that are forty and thirty-five. Those are suggestions. It's a little different than a white traffic sign. We're also adding a number of stop signs throughout the corridor. In all, this recommendation is for about sixty-three signs, I believe, if you count them all up. And so it's significant in the corridor. We did study it. We did get a traffic study for it. We don't bring this recommendation forward in a casual way, but really think that we need to do something to improve the safety along this corridor.
I really appreciate your attention to this. I appreciate this outcome, and I know the people that live there do too.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion to approve this. Absolutely.
Second.
Motion second to approve item 5B. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5C, a contract with Van Kirk Sand and Gravel Incorporated, doing business as Van Kirk Brothers Contracting for box repair, for repair of box culvert Q-217 at a cost not to exceed one hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. At the location shown on the exhibit that I've thrown on the overhead is box Q-217. It is referred to in our office as the rocket box. It has an excessive outlet velocity that is highly erosive. What we're trying to do with this project is slow down the flow as it crosses under the road and kind of relieve some of that pressure in hopes of not continuing to make Lancaster County's creeks wider and deeper.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
I am going to miss the term rocket box. Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Been hearing about this one for a little while.
Goodbye, rocket box.
5D, a contract with Van Kirk Sand and Gravel Incorporated, doing business as Van Kirk Brothers Contracting for replacement of county bridge J-138 at a cost not to exceed seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, fifteen dollars and eighty-five cents.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. This is bridge J-138. It is one of our bridges that is rated poor and is not in very good shape, kind of on the eastern edge of the city. This particular bridge, we originally budgeted one point five million dollars for last year about this time. And so I'm excited to see that we're still getting very aggressive bridge pricing, and so I would recommend approval of this contract.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5E, contract with Tim Cisco Construction LLC for replacement of county bridge C-262 at a cost not to exceed one hundred and thirty-one thousand, one hundred and five dollars and forty cents.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. This contract is to technically grade a road around bridge C-262, and we are recommending Tim Cisco for this project.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5F, a contract with Pavers Incorporated to provide road repair located at Old Chaney and Sawtilla Road. The cost of the county is not to exceed one million, four hundred and fourteen thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and seventeen cents.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County engineer. As shown on the exhibit I've placed on the overhead, are two stretches of road which we need to continue to maintain. And so what we're doing is we're doing some asphalt maintenance to these roads in order to extend their useful life.
Move approval? Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5G, contracts with the following for general construction services. The cost of the county shall not exceed three hundred thousand dollars. They are for Dax Construction Incorporated, HR Bookstrom Construction Incorporated, and Kenergy Construction Company.
Second.
Motion and second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5H, reappointment of the following to the visitors' promotion committee for a term from July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine, for Brian Sullivan, Jeff Barclay, and Jason Hin.
I move approval of these reappointments. Second.
Motion second to approve the reappointments. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5I, setting the salary for Braden Store, deputy county attorney, at an amount of ninety-six thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars as attorney one, effective July tenth, twenty twenty-five.
I stand there with the county attorney's office. We are requesting that Braden Store's salary be set at that step six. He'd previously been in our office for four years. He went and worked in private practice for two to three years. Went over to Africa as part of a human trafficking coalition over there. He's now coming back to the States, and so he reapplied, and we have extended him an offer to start July tenth. We did consult with HR as part of this, and they agree with the step six. That came from them, so that's why we're asking for that.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion second. Dan, you know, the board is really supportive of all you folks who are out there doing the work that you do and setting these salaries. Is this going to cause any fires that are going to come back on us and say, well?
No, I think that because we wanted to avoid that, so we wanted to consult with HR. We took his resume, kind of said, here's his experience. Where do you think he fits in with the spectrum of attorneys we have? They came back with step six. That's kind of where we thought he would land. It's consistent with where he left, so I don't see it being a problem, at least on our side.
Well, that's your best legal opinion. I presume...
The best I can give you right now.
Well, thank you for that. I'm glad that you went through the process and sorted that out. So motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest? Motion carries. 5J, a mini grant contract application with the Nebraska Department of Transportation Highway Safety Office in the amount of twenty thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars for the county sheriff's office to participate in a nationwide speeding prevention mobilization.
Good morning. Terry Wagner, Lancaster County Sheriff. The rule narrative speaks for itself. It's a speeding prevention initiative through the Nebraska Office of Highway Safety. It's run in the last two weeks of the month, and deputies will sign up to work overtime to fulfill the provision for the grant, and they reimburse us for that overtime.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion second to approve. Tara, you win the best tie of the day award.
I've got about four of these, and so this week, they all get worn.
A good tie we got there. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. 5K, acceptance of a Bureau of Justice Assistance Subgrant Award and special conditions from the Nebraska Crime Commission in the amount of ninety-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars to support the LSO Narcotics Task Force project.
Good morning. Terry Wagner again, Lancaster County Sheriff. We've had a deputy assigned to Lincoln Lancaster County Narcotics Task Force for many, many years, and this grant generally covers, although sometimes it ebbs and flows, it generally covers the deputy's wages, maybe not his benefits, but so we've been receiving this grant in one form or another for many years.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. 5L, acceptance of a subgrant award and special conditions from the Nebraska Crime Commission in the amount of fifty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars funded by the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention to support the Bay Malone Center and YWCA project.
Good morning. Sarah Hoyle, Director of Human Services for Lancaster County. This is competitive federal funding passed through the Crime Commission. This is Title II funding, so this is the funding that a couple of years ago, we worked with the feds and the Crime Commission to get Nebraska back into compliance with the OJJDP Act so that we could again start realizing this funding across Nebraska. So we're excited that we were awarded some of this, and we're equally excited to work with our partners who were funded.
Great. Thank you very much for working on this. I move approval.
Second.
Motion second. So what kind of, what will this grant help these organizations do? What will we see?
Sure. At the Bay, it'll help with mentoring, a mentoring component that they have for our youth. At the YWCA, it provides training for Lincoln Public Schools teachers and their social workers. And then the Malone Center, their funding is for educational advocate to work with our families who are struggling to navigate the public school system and work with them and getting their kids back enrolled in school. Oftentimes, kids are suspended, expelled, and families are kind of at a loss at what to do. So it's mending those relationships and getting them back into school.
I've heard good testimonies from families that have used that service, how much help, how much helpful that was for them to navigate the system.
Three important programs, so thank you for getting that done. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Thank you.
5M, a recommendation from the Personal Policy Board, request to change the pay grade of classification of Community Corrections Case Manager.
Good morning, commissioners. Jeff Gilpatrick, Community Corrections. This is a pay increase to bring our caseworkers up to what the average has been. This has been a project we've been working on for quite some time. We last discussed this at our budget hearing with Community Corrections, and we're bringing it before the board today.
Yeah.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. Jeff, this is really important for, to be compensating these folks from a competitive point of view. Their skills are in demand in other locations.
Yes. We're losing people to probation right next door and other, you know, compensations. Very difficult even higher because we're not even at, close to what the starting salary is.
Will this change, give us a, put us back in the competitive place?
It should, yes. I've worked very closely with comp and class in human resources to make certain that we are going to be competitive.
Okay. We have very good people over there in comp and class, so glad you're working there. Please call the roll.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, commissioners.
Commissioners, that brings us to item six, public comment. Members in the public wishing to speak in items relating to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time.
Any members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk.
Announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting, including budget hearings, on Thursday, July third, twenty twenty-five, at eight thirty a.m. in room one twelve of the county city building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, July eighth, twenty twenty-five, at nine a.m. in room one twelve of the county city building. County commissioners can be reached at four oh two, four four one, seven four four seven, or commish@lancaster.ene.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on LNK TV. LNK TV is available on Allo, Channel Two, and Spectrum Channel thirteen hundred. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln.ene.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. LNK TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Item eight is adjournment. Move adjournment.
Second.
Motion second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. We will now open the Lancaster County Board of Equalization meeting for Tuesday, July first, twenty twenty-five. Mr. Clerk?
Copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed on the county's website at lancaster.ene.gov. Printing options are available upon request. Brings us to item one, minutes. Approval of the Board of Minutes Equalization, excuse me, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, June seventeenth, twenty twenty-five.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion second to approve the minutes. Any comments, corrections? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Abstain.
Schulte?
Yep.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item two is the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
I move approval of the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Second.
Motion and second to approve. Please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yep.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three is our public hearing. The first public hearing is on the following motor vehicle tax exemption applications from Radiant Church, the University of Nebraska Foundation, Trinity United Methodist Church of Lincoln, St. Monica's Home, Hope Spoke, Capital Humane Society, Food Bank of Lincoln, and Villa Marie School.
We'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on the motor vehicle tax exemptions read by the clerk? I see no one.
The second public hearing is a motor vehicle tax exemption application for Youth for Christ Lincoln area.
Anyone wishing to speak about the Youth for Christ Lincoln area application? It appears not, Mr. Clerk. We'll close the public hearing.
That brings us to item four, the public hearing action items. 4A, the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval of the motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Second.
Motion and second to approve 4A. Please call the roll.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flouride?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. 4B, the motor vehicle tax exemption application for Youth for Christ Lincoln area.
Move approval of the motor vehicle tax exemption application for Youth for Christ Lincoln area.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve 4B. Please call the roll.
Flouride?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Abstain.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item five, public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak in items relating to county Board of Equalization business on the agenda may do so at this time.
Any members of the public wishing to speak at this time? Nope, we will close public comment.
Item six is adjournment.
Move adjourn. Second.
Motion second to adjourn. Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.